Christina.
Good evening and welcome to the November 21st meeting of the governing body. I call this matter to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Kell, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Since it's Thanksgiving, I thought I'd talk about thankfulness. Be thankful for your friends, be thankful for your family, be thankful for your friends that are just like family. Look back at your past year, at your accomplishments and triumphs, and be thankful. Look back on your past year on things that didn't go your way, but you learned from, and be thankful. Make plans and goals for the upcoming year and be thankful that you can grow. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll work that myself.
You do?
Yeah.
Uh, glasses.
Okay, we'll move on to our first agenda item, roll call.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Nagar.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay, we'll move on now to the next agenda item, appointments. Madam Clerk.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Carly Feldhausen to the Shawnee County Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term ending November 30, 2025. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Robert Banks to the Topeka Housing Authority Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2027.
Okay, you've heard the appointments as read. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Kell, second from Councilman Hiller. Thank you very much. If you call the roll, please.
All right, Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay, which has been carried, we'll move on now. Oh, excuse me, before we do that, I'd like to ask Mr. Banks, who is with us this evening, if he would stand so we could recognize him and thank him for serving. Okay, now we'll move on to agenda item number three, presentations. Madam Clerk.
It's a human resources recruiting update.
Okay, good evening. Jackie.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Are we short one?
Yes.
I'll come and get it.
Oh. Good. When you're ready, Jackie.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. We wanted to share an update on some of the recruiting activity and the successes that we've had and some challenges that we continue to face in the area of recruiting. As we all know, recruiting and staffing has been an ongoing challenge across the country, not just within the city of Topeka. But I wanted to share, and on your screen now is all of the hires by quarter for the first three quarters of 2023. Behind the PowerPoint presentation in your handout, there are the specific positions that we filled each quarter. And that handout is a report by quarter for January through September of 2023. And in addition to the positions filled with the specific position names, it also includes information on career fairs that we have participated in, the number of interns that various departments have hosted, as well as turnover information for each quarter. Moving on to some of the initiatives that we have been implementing during 2023, significant was the wage schedule adjustments that we were able to attain with police, fire, and Teamsters. Our recruitment team has also been utilizing boosting of certain job positions on Indeed. And what boosting means is that we can pay an extra advertising fee, and then that puts a position at the top of the search engine when candidates are making searches for specific positions. An example that we recently used for positions that we boosted include the attorney and deputy city attorney positions within our legal department. So folks that are looking for attorney positions do a search on Indeed, those positions would come to the top of their search. Sourcing and targeting is another initiative that we've implemented in 2023, and this allows our recruitment team to seek out qualified candidates and invite them to apply for specific open positions within the city of Topeka. And at some points, we can also search resumes for folks that are not looking for jobs, but their resumes may be stored in Indeed or LinkedIn, and also make them aware. So that's another, we've particularly done that with engineering positions in 2023. We've also utilized some, I guess, industry-specific recruitment sources such as DICE for technical and engineering positions, so using sources to recruit on that are specific to the types of positions that we're looking for, rather than just relying on general advertising means. Our team is also communicating and reaching out for the positive impact in having managers even reach out to potential candidates to build relationships and try to entice folks to apply to city positions. In addition to boosting and sourcing, our police department has also realized some success with lateral hires during 2023. Our contract allows for individuals with prior law enforcement experience to hire in up to state eight, step eight of their pay matrix. They come with already law enforcement experience, so that allows us an abbreviated training, and they are all able to get out into field operations sooner as well. We have been utilizing internship programs and have had success with those in public works utilities, legal, finance, and the police department. And some of that success with that has realized full-time employment for interns. We've been using in-house training, including our CDL program and our EMT certification program in conjunction with Washburn Tech. And then our firefighter candidates go into the academy after that. And we are exploring implementing apprenticeships in partnership with Washburn Tech as well into 2024 for some of the trade positions, plumbers, electricians, and HVAC. Some examples of successes from some of these initiatives that I wanted to just take a second and share with you include our street maintenance section. For quite a while, our streets maintenance section was down as many as 15 vacant positions. With the recent increase in the starting pay from $15 to $19 per hour, and implementing the in-house CDL program, we are now at capacity at street maintenance, and it's been a long time since we've been fully up. And that's exciting going into the winter months, so I wanted to share that with you all. Additionally, we did have four firefighter new hires that started in the Washburn program and recently just graduated the academy. And so that on-the-job training and the increased starting pay has very much benefited our fire department. And for the first time in a long time, we do have a candidate pool that is greater than the number of vacancies. And so we are able to be more selective in the folks that we bring on board. Next slide. Some other initiatives that are not directly recruiting-related but aid in the applicant experience that we've been able to implement in 2023 include the mobile friendly application submission, which means that it is a format that's friendly for phone devices. We have an Indeed easy apply feature, which means that if the candidate sees a city of Topeka posting on Indeed, they can just click the apply, and it sends their resume over to our application system so that we can see that they've applied for that job. And it will do auto-filling from their resume into our application. We have been posting entry-level jobs in English and Spanish to try to be more inclusive and attract folks that might have Spanish as a first language to some of our positions. Another feature that we're looking to add in 2024 is the text-to-apply feature, and that will allow candidates to apply for our positions via text. So with these additional features, we are hopeful to continue to attract applicants and make it easy to apply for our open positions. Another key component of our successes with recruitment in 2023 has been collaboration. Human Resources simply can't recruit and onboard people without the collaboration and commitment from our hiring managers out in the departments. And we have really had great success in working with the hiring managers and understanding where we can be flexible and attracting our candidates. And that includes more focus on competency-based ads rather than a focus on hard experience and education requirements, and that we're looking more at aptitude and a better fit for the position. The other thing that we have been doing is participating in interviews and offering on-the-spot conditional offers. So after an interview, if the hiring manager feels that that's the best candidate for their position, then Human Resources is right there and can do an on-the-spot conditional job offer so that the candidate is leaving with a job offer and hopefully not getting enticed by other employers after that interview and that wait time. The other thing that that does is it allows us to have the information we need to start the background checking processes, and it's a shorter turnaround from interview to actual hire date for candidates, and that's beneficial for the departments and the candidate as well. In conclusion, I just wanted to tell you that those are some of the things that we have done to change and improve our recruitment process over the past year. There continue to be challenges and opportunities for improvement, and we look forward to continuing to work with the departments and receive that feedback to make ongoing improvements to help retain and attract quality candidates to the city. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jackie. Councilman Kell.
First off, I want to say thank you for, this is going to be your last council meeting, I think.
I think so.
So thank you for the time you've spent with the city here. You've done an amazing job. How much have we worked with sides like Washburn Tech, but like, I've been approached by Allen Community College and even Washburn about possibly working together so we can take some of our existing employees and get them trained up so they could actually move up positions that may not be qualified for without that extra classwork?
So some of those relationships did fall by the wayside during COVID, and I've actually just, I'm in the last couple of weeks, talked with our HR specialist about, we used to do what's called an education fair, and we would also, so we would invite universities in. And we would also, there were certain parts, for example, I know in the past, and we're going to reach out to Rasmussen, but part of the police academy counted for credit towards criminal justice. So we are dusting all of that off and reaching out to Rasmussen. We, University of Nebraska reached out to us recently, and Washburn, to try to see what we can do. I've not heard and not have reached out to Allen County, but certainly the other three I mentioned, and I think it's important, we do have a tuition reimbursement program, and that professional development is key for employees to be aware of.
Yeah, I think it's really, if we can move our people up from within, and especially some of those open positions we have in the middle sometimes, instead of trying to find someone else, we can just get that person trained up and moved up. It benefits the city and benefits their employees, so. I think the Allen County one was, you just made your announcement, that's when I met with them, so I think they were probably just thinking, well, okay, I'm going to be around a little bit longer, so. But again, I just want to say thank you for your time here with us, and enjoy whatever comes next.
Thank you very much.
Further questions? Councilwoman Duncan.
So I don't even know if this is possible. I'll give a bad example, representative, and I don't need any specific examples, but when we do do, I mean, I know we have a problem. We train employees, and any business has this problem. But we have it worse because we're not the, we're government, we're not the market, which always is going to pay a little more, you know? And I know, so we will train individuals and then get the swoop in, and they're stolen away from us in some of these, and there's only some of that we control. But for instance, we now do our CDL in-house, correct?
Yes.
Do we have any, once we brought that employee in and said, we're going to train you for your CDL, which out there is between $3,800 and $5,000 if you did it on your own, does that come with any temporary strings attached? Like, you've got to stay here for a year before we give it, and then you swoop away? I mean, do we have any sort of those types of programs or strings within any of these departments?
Yes, we do. We do for the CDL program. If they leave sooner than one year, then they have to repay $3,000, which is still less than what it costs to go get the training on your own. And then with our EMT program, it is a scaled repayment based on how long they stay, up to two years.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Want to echo the thank yous. He got ahead of me there, but appreciate all your service.
Thank you.
Have a comment and a couple of questions.
Okay.
One is, appreciate the work that you mentioned in your words about changing the job descriptions. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala and I have been working with Code Compliance quite a bit, and we know that you worked with them on the changing of their job descriptions per the Karen Black study, but particularly leaning it more toward customer service than high-end technical, and their report to us is that they're full as well, and that's pretty exciting. So thank you for the partnership on that. I had a question about how we're, I don't see any engineering hires. You mentioned that we're working on that. Are we making some progress?
So we have hired one engineer, and I was being pretty general, but the example that I gave, the sourcing and then contacting the hiring manager to reach out and talk to a potential candidate, that is a success story with our engineer hire. So I think understanding the benefits, et cetera, with the city, as well as getting to talk directly with someone that is in the department and kind of understanding the type of work, the type of environment, was very much helpful in getting that person to apply and ultimately be hired. The other thing that we have been doing is a lot with interns, and then if they get qualified as an engineer in training, bringing them on as engineer in training, and then growing into engineering. And so we do have a few candidates that we are prepared to offer for engineer in training. It is very competitive. The semester is ending within the next week, so whether or not we get any acceptance to offers is, our fingers are crossed, but we're hoping that that will be fruitful and start to come into fruition as well.
Thank you for that. And I don't know if I'm right, but one of the things I've thought all along, because we have had so many vacancies, is that similar to the success that police and fire have in hiring in a class, and with the diversity that we've wanted as well, and making, and having it be appealing to people who are looking for that kind of workplace as well, that if we, you know, instead of all those vacancies being a reason why maybe I wouldn't want to go work there, let's say, that flipping that to promoting that we're hiring a class might be helpful, so.
If we, if we could find, I mean, engineering students and interns, there's not a lot of them, so the pickings are pretty slim already. One of the things that I didn't touch on with our internship program is throughout the summer, we do partner and participate in the top city interns, and what that does is brings our interns into connection with other interns that are at other organizations across the city. And they do different socializing events to try to help connect them with the community in addition to our organization. And we do think that that helps them if they can get some connection to Topeka generally. So that's one of the other initiatives that we've been doing the last few summers.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Jackie, you mentioned DICE, and it's here in your, what again is that?
It is a recruitment platform, kind of like an Indeed, but it's more specific to technical jobs such as IT, engineering, those technical specialties.
So would that be what is used to reach out to those professional organizations where we're trying to recruit?
So that is a tool that we reach out to and post on in addition to professional organizations. So part of what we do is we work with the hiring managers to say, are there certain associations and organizations that we should also be getting on their job boards? For example, the Kansas Bar, the Topeka Bar for legal, the APWA for our engineering and our public works project manager-type positions.
Okay, good, that's good to hear. And have we had much success with law enforcement and the lateral transfer, lateral hiring?
I believe we've had three lateral hires this year.
Good, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your report, and like everyone else here who will have the opportunity, to thank you for your years of service here at the city. Appreciate your willingness to do everything that you can while you were here with us and worked with everybody. You're always a pleasant person to be around, and I really hate to see you leave, but I understand that greener pastures are calling you, so thank you again.
Thank you. I've really enjoyed my time.
Okay, and we'll move on now to agenda item number four, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinsteig, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of July 29 to August 25, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinsteig, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of August 26 to September 29, 2023, and enumerating said expenditures therein. C is a resolution introduced by councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, granting Midwest Demo Kings an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. D are minutes of the regular meeting of November 14, 2023, and there are no applications.
Okay, you've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Kell. Second from Councilman Duncan. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five, action items. If the clerk will read, please.
A is an ordinance introduced by councilmember Spencer Duncan concerning merchant or private security guard amending sections 590, 010, 020, and 150 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original sections.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, this item was discussed at the November 24th meeting, and if you approve this, it allows our officers, TPD officers employed by state agencies or a security agency stationed at a state agency to wear their TPD uniforms. And if Councilman Duncan would care that had anything, or City Attorney Stanley, now's the time.
Councilman?
No, that's what it does.
Okay.
I will just remind everyone, because I know the question came up last week, that it only extends to those state agencies. It doesn't do anything for any other in-uniform operations at this time, so it's just very exclusive to the state agencies. Thank you.
Heard item read. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Nagar. Call the roll, please.
So the mayor does not vote on this. Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, move on to agenda item 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinsteig concerning vacant property registration, amending Chapter 865 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original sections.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, you had recently, you had at some point hired ProChamp to help you identify vacant properties. Well, they are no longer in business, and that's why this is on your agenda, to repeal that particular ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for City Manager? Okay. Any action to consider? Your motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan. Always looking for that second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kell. If you call the roll, please.
Again, the mayor does not vote on this one. Councilmembers Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We'll move to action item 5C. Brenda.
C is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinsteig relating to the city of Topeka's legislative agenda for the 2024 legislative session.
Mr. City Manager.
So Mayor, governing body, I'd like to turn this over to Whitney Damon, our lobbyist, and he will talk with you about what the priorities are in our legislative agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the governing body and city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I thought it'd highlight some of the issues coming up in the next legislative session, how they kind of layer into what we're working on. Tax policy is obviously a big deal for both parties and the governor. They did not make much progress on that in 2023 due to bills that were passed, vetoed, and there was no override. So we can expect, at least from the Republican Party, to have discussions on one rate income tax again, and some kind of property tax relief. Typically, what's been talked about is trying to reduce the statewide mill levy that funds schools. That creates some challenges for the funding of K-12 education, because that was part of litigation settlement as to how K-12 is funded. Democrats have proposed their own plan, which would ask for a constitutional amendment to reduce the appraised or the assessed valuation of residential property from 11.5% to 9%. That necessarily can create a shift. It also requires a 2/3 vote to put that on the ballot, and there's also other proposals that they have made, including funding LAVTR, which is the priority of the Kansas Association of Counties, and the League of Municipalities has supported that as well. Unfortunately for them, I guess, Republicans have indicated they don't support funding 2024 is an election year. The state is projected to have $3.5 billion in the bank at the end of fiscal year '25, which is June 30th. which is June 30 of next year. So there will be a lot of interest in trying to do something on tax policy, which probably requires Republicans, Democrats, and the governor to try to work something out if they're to get something passed, because veto overrides have been hard to come by on tax policy. And we'll see what they can get into next year and whether they can work something out along those lines. Other issues that we're going to probably see next year include medical marijuana, Medicaid expansion, public-private competition, school choice, homelessness, foster care, childcare regulations, economic development, star bonds, election laws, energy, electric rates, and sales tax process for local units of government. Specific to that, interim committee had a discussion about the process for getting local sales tax initiatives put into law where a city or a county has to come to the legislature and says, we want authority to increase our sales tax rate for economic development or just in general. And you have to get legislative approval and the legislature says, at least that committee suggested that grant some blanket authority and local units of government have the ability to use the authority granted to them as they deem appropriate and don't have to come to the legislature. So we'll see if that makes it into a tax bill next year as well. Some of the issues that have been talked about that you have in front of you with the resolution and how those kind of mesh with what's going on in the legislature is what we'll talk about now, the LAVTR. There is a general interest, I think Republicans, Democrats, the governor, to try to put some downward pressure on property taxes. Question is how to do that. The state has had an LAVTR, Local Adverlorum Tax Reduction Fund requirement in statute for nearly 20 years and has ignored it for nearly 20 years through a proviso they put into the budget that says, notwithstanding the law, we're not going to fund this. The issue will get talked about. There will be probably significant hearings on it. But again, I think that legislation will be a challenge to pass in a Republican-controlled legislature. Business competition. We've seen this issue for probably a decade or more. Certain health club chain owner has sought to get a property tax break, sometimes a sales tax break, due to competition from nonprofit health clubs or government subsidized entities, whether it's a event space or public golf course or so forth. They've made some traction on the bill from time to time. This past legislative session, there was a proposal sent to the governor and a package of tax issues that would have proposed to create some kind of an exemption for property taxes to certain health clubs, childcare facilities, and restaurants located within a mile or some other geographic boundary of a government subsidized or offered entity that competed with them. I think it's fair to say in 2024, we might see that list grow to include hotels. Probably not a secret, but the Topeka Hotel issue is the subject of discussion in the State House, in particular with some of the people that have pushed this legislation. So we will be dealing with that and talking about that. I've mentioned the sales tax issue, the unfunded mandate issue. That is something that is consistent with all cities and counties and other units of government of trying to prevent the state from passing the buck and pushing something back down to the local units of government to fund. And certainly something that all cities and counties have fought against from time to time, sometimes successfully, sometimes not. The abandoned housing issue, we've talked about that in the legislative process on numerous occasions. Becomes an annual battle between property rights of those who live next to abandoned properties and those who have supported, those who own abandoned properties to a higher level. And it's made it a challenge to make much progress on that in the legislative process, but it continues to be something we advocate for when the opportunity presents itself. Mental health is something that ties into the homelessness issue, which we've had several meetings with the city manager and the city attorney and myself, as well as participating in the recent homelessness interim hearing. And it's becoming a bigger issue beyond just City of Topeka, City of Lawrence, and other cities are starting to have challenges, both big and small. So hopefully, we can see some positive discussion on that issue. Mental health ties into that, as we know, as does drugs and crime and protection of private property rights and so forth. Medicaid expansion will be back up again. The governor's been traversing the state, talking about that. They've released some polling that indicates it's very popular with the people of Kansas, upwards of 75, 80%. Remains a significant challenge in the legislature. Particularly, House and Senate leadership has indicated that they do not support that and generally keep legislation that's germane to an amendment from coming to the floor. But it will be discussed again in 2024. Touched upon homelessness. We'll see if there's some opportunities there with the legislature. Hopefully, taking a hard look at that, we know we're going to have a committee on welfare reform that's going to get back into that issue as well. Minimum wage, number five, is listed on here. I know some years ago, there was legislation which precluded local units of government from requiring certain levels of pay for public works projects, specifically a prevailing wage on municipal projects. That was put into state law, and that creates a challenge to that kind of legislation. Legislature, those who are in charge don't like those kinds of issues either. Amending your property, we've talked about that and the potential for that project. I don't know that that's a legislative issue at this point in time. And then broadband, the state continues to try to expand broadband. It's a challenge in a rural state at times. There's obviously federal money, state money, and continued discussion on that matter as well. I think the issue is improving. It's not perfect for those who live in the rural parts of Kansas that have little population getting high-speed internet. But it is a priority at the federal level and the state level as well. So I would also note that on Wednesday, November 29, the Shawnee County delegation meets in the State House. About 20 entities are coming in to talk about their legislative agenda in 10, 15-minute blocks. City of Topeka is scheduled to appear at 9:30 a.m. that morning. They start at 9 o'clock. First up is Washburn University, where the second. Some of the other entities that are going to appear include the Lego, County Commissioner Bill Rippon is going to speak on behalf of the counties, Greater Topeka Partnership, Shawnee County Public Schools, Topeka Rescue Mission, and so forth. And so that typically is the only time the Shawnee County delegation meets on a routine basis. You'll find in the State House during the year, the South Central delegation will wind up Leavenworth County or Johnson County delegation. They meet sometimes on a weekly basis and have a lunch and bring people in to talk about their issues. Shawnee County delegation will meet if there are critical issues that they want some input on. For example, they called some special meetings when we were talking about docking and KDHE. And so those kinds of things are, those meetings are available when we have a critical issue that the city or the county is interested in. And the chair of the delegation, Senator Dietrich, has been very helpful in accommodating those kinds of requests. So with that, Mayor and members of the governing body, happy to respond to your questions.
Questions for Whitney? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items that aren't on this agenda. I've been, I've asked around a little bit and have been advised that maybe it's not a good year to have them be on the agenda, but I wanted to raise them anyway today. And if you have any reaction, that's fine. It has pained me that after the city council here worked so hard on gun control as well as its sign ordinances, that the state superseded our home rule and changed that for us. And someday, I would like to get that local control back. Any reaction?
Won't happen on gun issues. I don't see that. And quite frankly, it's a bipartisan issue.
I understand that. It's just so painful to, you know, we worked so hard and had a pretty good collaborative system going between police and community and so on. And to look at all of our death rate and our gun-related death rate this year and thinking if there was anything we could do to make guns a little less accessible, how maybe it would help.
The sign issue is a challenge as well. It's become essentially a campaign right anymore to be able to place signs in the right of way. And that is what has happened statewide. There's legislation passed to essentially preempt local units of government for a period of time. City of Wichita said they interpreted it a different way, kind of did their own thing down there. And I think the current Attorney General's indicated.
That's not okay.
It's not okay, and that he would challenge that if they continue to try to enforce that. So it's.
Are there reports that any other cities have suffered what we have, which is once, because of that, people think it's okay to put the car wash signs out there, the for rent signs out there, the, you know, we've really, it's been costly to us to have the zoning inspector go out and the complaints come in about all the signs that are where they don't belong. But I can understand why people are confused. Nobody else?
I have not heard that. It's something, obviously, we can discuss with the league when we have our weekly meetings during the session.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I know. Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Whitney. I appreciate your report. Councilman Kell?
So you're talking about some of the issues with like, you want to be like medical marijuana.
Yep.
How close are we at that stage? And it's one of those things, it seems like it's an issue every year. It's not dying, you know, it's not going away or something like that, but it seems like.
It's not dying, but it's not moving very much. So a couple of years ago, the House passed a bill, sent it to the Senate. There was some belief that perhaps in 2023, the Senate would take the issue up and could potentially put a bill on the floor. That was precluded when we essentially had a chair swap between the Senate Committee on Utilities, Senate Committee on Federal and State Affairs. And so the former Chair of Fed and State Affairs was receptive and an advocate for a bill and was working to get something to the floor. The new chair held extensive hearings on the issue and essentially immediately, as committee debate began, tabled the bill and said, we're done with it. So that is a big hurdle. I think probably his personal belief and probably some direction from leadership that the Senate did not want that bill on the floor. The surrounding states, by and large, have passed some form of marijuana, recreational marijuana as well, Colorado, Oklahoma, Missouri. Personally, I haven't seen where we've had significant issues in Kansas with, you know, people transferring across the border, bringing stuff across the border. Law enforcement hasn't necessarily testified in that regard in the legislative process, but you do still get pretty strong resistance from law enforcement in the legislature to the issue, and that seems to have tempered the enthusiasm, at least on the Senate side.
Yeah, I just know medical marijuana is the first step to possibly get just, you know, open. Like I was in New York City and saw a guy roll a joint right next to an officer, and I was like, this is wild to see that, and when we have such a restrictive state ourselves. But it's like, all the surrounding states kind of have it going, but we're different. You know, like we have legalized gambling, which I was kind of getting to get on to next. Is there any benefit to Topeka since this has been about a year now that that's been in effect? Have we seen any benefits as a city from legalized gambling?
In regard to sports wagering?
Yes.
I think that would be a question probably for bars and restaurant owners who cater to people that like sports wagering. Typically, sports wagering is done through a phone app. And so the discussion was, at least in the legislative process, that it created an opportunity for people to go to their favorite bar, watch sports on the big screen, and, you know, partake in sports wagering while they're eating another round of chicken wings and beer.
Is there going to be possibly any expansion to that, talking in that? Because I know some people want to partake, but they don't want to necessarily get all that information on their phone and have all that access to bank accounts, things like that. So is there any talk of like, maybe like kiosks, like you talk about at restaurants, or even possibly having spots throughout Kansas that aren't attached to the casino itself?
The way the law was written, no. There, the four state-owned and operated casinos can, do have what you call brick-and-mortar wagering. And so you can go and place your bets at a window, so to speak. The tribes, several of the tribes are kind of working, going down that path as well, including the Prairie Band north of Topeka. The law does not allow for, for example, kiosks to be placed in retail establishments, the way the law was written.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Whitney. We have a resolution before us. It's an action item. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Valdivia Akla. You'll call the roll, please.
Okay, we have Councilmembers Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Emerson?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried. Before we move on to the next action item, I'd like to call a 10-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. So we'll recess for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Councilman, I appreciate the help. The mayor had to step out, so I will do my best to finish the meeting. And we were, we just finished up item 5C. Let's move on to item 5D. The clerk will read.
D is authorizing a public hearing date of December 12, 2023, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2023 operating budget.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, governing body, this is asking you to set a date for a budget amendment public hearing on December 12, 2023. Now, a budget amendment is a mechanism that the legislature afforded us a number of years ago, that when you get to the end of the year, if you've had increased expenditures, if you had revenues come over what you projected, you can go in and amend the budget to account for those. That can, that can also help you from going over, making a statutory violation if you catch it soon enough. And that's not what the case is here, but if you catch it soon enough, it's a mechanism that allows you to buy a budget amendment to go set the levels of revenues and expenditures higher. It does not increase taxes. But what it does is set the ship straight when you get towards the end of the year, because you can't, remember, you adopt your budget at least six months ahead of time and 18 months before you get to the end of next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Freddie Mallon, our Chief Financial Officer.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, governing body, I had to prepare a 20-minute presentation, but I think that a city... I think that a city manager kind of summarized it pretty well. So the actual public hearing date will be scheduled for December 12, with the purpose of hearing and answering questions related to the amendments to the 2023 operating budget. So the proposed 2023 budget amendment would have a total budgeting impact totaling $3.7 million, impacting the IT techno, the information technology fund, the facility fund, alcohol and drug safety, opioids, economic development, ESK, R H I D, and public parking fund, with a funding source ranging in combinations between fund revenues and balances. If you have any question, I'll stand here for any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Freddie. This is a little bit disjointed, so I'm going to split this into two phases on questions. I'll ask Councilman Duncan to be my proxy in the chambers and ask for any questions among the folks that are there. Once that's finished, we'll look at the folks online and see if there's any questions. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you. Anyone in here have questions, comment? No? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, deputy mayors. Just, just, just sharing that there, I've had some conversation with Freddie prior to today. There was in my, with the separation, the way it was presented, with numbers in one place and explanations in another, and it was a little unclear which ones would be revenue neutral because they were just moving money from one source to another. I've, I've been assured that there'll be an updated handout for this by the time it goes onto the agenda for, for the public hearing. Is that correct?
That's right, ma'am.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
We're all good here, deputy mayor?
Thank you, councilman. Any questions from the folks online? Seeing none. Is this just a simple, simple vote, city attorney? Or do we need to ask for comments?
Today is actually a, sets the public hearing, so yes, you can just vote and you don't need to ask for comments if you don't want to.
Very good. Look for a motion. Have a motion from Councilman Emerson, a second from Councilwoman Nager. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And Kell.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 5E. The clerk will read.
E is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt relating to the vacation of a 20-foot-wide public alley extending east-west and located between properties lying at 410 Southwest Sixth Avenue and 523 Southwest Harrison Street in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and governing body, you've had this on your agenda before. If you remember, we had it on October 17, 2023. There were questions about the, the, the vacation, and it was deferred until tonight, at least to give the planners time to work through this with, with Mr. Sherwood. So Dan Warner and Mike Hall, Dan Warner and Mike Hall will answer any questions you have about this and bring you up to date on the discussions on this particular.
Deputy Mayor, governing body, I'll be brief. We're, we're basically going back to square one on this one. The applicant wishes to move forward with the proposed vacation as it was originally presented. Spent some time trying to work out the issues with the different utilities and, and having and not having a public utility easement. He's come to the conclusion that to go ahead and accept that public utility easement. And just a reminder, he wishes to install a security fence across what is now the alley, and he's vacating a 20-foot-wide portion of the east-west public alley. And, and again, the public access easement will allow access to the vacant out, to the vacated alley needed by the city of Topeka and Evergy. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Warner? Again, I'll look to Councilman Duncan.
Thank you. I guess I have a question, because the time, trying to remember the timeline, when we saw this the first time, there was a public hearing the first time around. Does, is, was another one needed or should have there been a second one? Or no, because we didn't actually change anything?
Correct.
Moving back to it. Okay. Just want to make sure we covered all our bases there, since I know we got a little muddled. Any other questions here in the room? Councilwoman Hiller?
Just to clarify then, so we, the utilities were what was hanging it up last time, I think. And so now all the utilities, the city and the other utilities are okay with the arrangement he's offering?
No. So to be more specific, Mr. Sherwood did not want to vacate the alley and have to have a utility easement in place. So he was trying to work out to not have the utility easement. That's what took this couple of months here. That did not happen. He could not come to an agreement, and we're back to square one. He's accepting that he needs a public utility easement if he wants to vacate the alley.
Okay, so the, the situation this evening is that we're being asked to approve this, and he's, he's, he's going to actually be okay with it and live with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve once the time comes.
Those are all the questions here.
Thank you. Any questions online? Seeing none? Did I hear a motion from Councilwoman Hiller?
Yes.
Second.
Second from Councilman Kell. The clerk will take the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Yes.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
And Nager.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will move on to item 6A. The clerk will read.
Is discussion regarding the 2024 Topeka Dreams 3 Neighborhood Improvement Initiatives Program awardees.
Mr. City manager?
Thank you, deputy mayor and governing body. Bianca Burnett, with our senior community engagement coordinator, will walk through the 2024 Topeka Dreams 3 allocation with you. It's for $200,000. So Bianca?
Thank you. Good evening, governing, governing body, deputy mayor, interim city manager, everyone else. Tonight, I'm presenting the final citizen advisory council funding recommendations for the 2024. Thank you. For the 2024 Topeka Dreams 3 Neighborhood Improvement Initiatives Program. Let's see. The Dreams 3 Initiative is an annual neighborhood grant program provided by the city to eligible neighborhood improvement associations. Grant awards range from $1,000 up to $50,000 for improvement projects that are related to neighborhood infrastructure, accessibility, quality of life, and community engagement projects. $60,000 of the funding is our federal community development block grant funding, and $140,000 is typically from city infrastructure, geo bonds, or other funding sources, for a total of $200,000, as the city manager mentioned. This year, neighborhood leaders had the opportunity to meet with our city planning department, our public works staff, in early January through March to discuss potential projects. And then preliminary applications were submitted on September 1 and reviewed by an internal staff committee of community engagement, utilities, public works, and planning staff. Final revised applications from the neighborhoods were submitted on October 9, and we had seven eligible citizen advisory council members who reviewed and scored the submitted applications. Seven of the eight original applications received were recommended to receive Dreams 3 funding for approximately $143,785, with remaining funding going towards contingency to support any previously awarded Dreams projects, as well as these projects, if there are any potential overages on those projects. All awarded projects will be tentatively scheduled for design, construction, and installation in 2024, with any final completion in 2025. And on behalf of the citizen advisory council, I ask the governing body to consider their recommendations for approval of funding at the December 6 council meeting. And I stand for any additional questions.
All right. Any questions in the chambers?
Nope, does not appear to be.
Thank you. Any questions online? All right. No questions. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item 6B. The clerk will read.
Be his discussion concerning the adoption of the 2021 International Residential Code.
Mr. City manager?
Mr. Deputy Mayor and governing body, this presentation will be done by Richard Faulkner, who is our Development Services Division Director.
Deputy Mayor, counsel, appreciate you giving me the time. Tonight, I'm presenting a request to adopt the 2021 International Residential Code. It is written by, oh, I got control of this? It's written by the International Code Council. The city has several ordinances and codes that we adopt for the construction that goes on in our community. As you can see, the one 2009 International Residential Code is what we're using for residential structures at this time. And the request is to move up to the 2021. Best practice management, best practice management is that we stay within three to six years of the present code. This 2021 is the present code that we have. Also, the governing body has shown an interest in us keeping up with the most current code. Before we move forward with adopting the code, we had the International Code Council come and give us classes on the changes that have been made from the 2009 to the 2021, so that we would be up to date on that. Updating the code will help us to stay current with not just the codes, but also with what's going on in the construction industry. The codes help us to make sure that our buildings are safe and improve the quality of life for our citizens. As you can see from the cities that we compare ourselves with, we're going to be the first city to adopt the 2021 Residential Code, which is something that I believe that the council was wanting us to do. The code was reviewed by the Building Board, Fire and Appeals, and they established a subcommittee for that review to be done. We had architect on the, on the board, two contractors, the building inspectors, and myself. So we reviewed the code to see what things that we want to keep and the things that we didn't need in our community. We also took this recommendation to the Policy and Finance Committee for their review, and they approved it for us to move forward on a three to zero vote. And I, my recommendation is that we do adopt the code, as well as the board, the BBFA, plus the subcommittee. We all recommend it. We adopt the code. Notable changes, the door from the garage into the house is now going to be required to have an automatic closure on it because of the gases and the fumes that may come out of the garage. So it's just a better safety to make sure that that door closes to keep those fumes from penetrating into the house. This other one that does specifically having a code for decks is a big one for us, because we had to come up with a code for the decks, so, and design it. So now we have a little bit more comfort that the, they, it's been designed by more professional people than us, and we hope that they're going to be safer decks. Also, smoke detectors can now be, I call it Bluetooth. They can be wirelessly connected, so that they are, so that's a, that's a big change. And that also shows that by adopting new codes, we can stay current with the things that are going on in the construction industry. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Appreciate the update. Is there any questions in the chamber?
Nope, none here.
Any questions online? Seeing none? Thank you. Appreciate the discussion, the presentation. We will move on to public comment. I believe we have one person signed up for public comment, Henry McClure.
He does not appear to be here.
All right. Thank you. We will then move on to announcements. City clerk?
There is no meeting next week on November 28.
Very good. City manager?
Sorry, deputy mayor and governing body. The announcement I have is to wish you, our employees, and our community a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Comment, comment or announcements from the council? We'll start with Councilman Kell.
Just remind everyone that this week with trash, it's going to be a wonky schedule, so make sure you check your schedules, make sure you're getting your trash out and your recycling out to the curb on the correct days. And then also that the community Thanksgiving dinner will be this Thursday. There are still some slots to volunteer. They're still looking for volunteers. Or if you know anyone that might need to sign up for, for a meal or, or go there for a meal, please pass the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the community for voting in this month's community elections. Congratulations to our two colleagues who won their reelection bids, council members Valdivia Akla and Duncan, and also congratulations to the council persons-elect, Banks and Miller. We're excited to have them come aboard, and Tony and I will just get out of your way. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I mean, Mr. Deputing Mayor.
Thank you. I will not have any comments either now or at the end here, so I will move on to Councilwoman Hofer. Oh, sorry. I think I missed Councilman Duncan. Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. It is Thanksgiving. I'm going to take a minute, I guess, here. I want to give thanks. Emerson and Ortiz are still on here, correct? All right, well, I'm going to take thanks for crosstown rivalry, rivalries this evening. I know, you wonder where I'm going with this one. We're losing one of these council members, and Councilmember Emerson, so we lose two of them. And, and one of the things that has been a, a constant in his years on this council between himself and Councilwoman Ortiz, has been their longstanding defense and rivalry of their high schools. In one corner, you have Councilmember Emerson with Highland Park High School, and the other corner, you have Councilmember Ortiz with Topeka High. Those are very deep roots, and they constantly remind us of their support and their importance of those schools and their dedication to those schools. So I thought to myself, as Councilmember Emerson leaves us, somehow that rivalry that has been a constant in these years should, should be remembered and, and recognized as we move forward. So I thought, how can I do that as an esteemed Topeka West graduate to recognize that 501 rivalry? So here's the first thing that I did. So as a present to Councilmember Emerson, as I was at a Highland Park event recently... So as a present to Councilmember Emerson, as I was at a Highland Park event recently, I saw that they are selling Highland Park High legacy bricks as a fundraiser. And so there will now be a brick that will go down that says Sylvia Ortiz says, Go Scots. And that is my gift to Councilmember Emerson, that he can take a victory on that end, that she will forever be a part of Highland Park High School. But I didn't want that to go unchecked. I didn't want Councilmember Ortiz mad at me because I still have to work with her moving forward. And so I have also made sure that in the auditorium, where they put names on the seats, there will be one that says, in honor of Tony Emerson, Go Trojans. And so I've made sure that while he is leaving us, their longstanding rivalry will live on for a very long time, etched in metal and brick on both of those two high schools. So that is my Thanksgiving present to them as we move forward. And with that, I hope everyone has a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving.
Well played, Councilman. All right, let's move on to Councilwoman Hofer.
Okay. Tonight, I'm going to make another reminder, or a new reminder, because we don't have a meeting next week on November 30th. There will be a meeting at the Holiday Building for the utility projects, I believe, three through seven, everything that's down the Polquency Viaduct neighborhood. It'll run everywhere from on, under I-70, straight over to almost Hallmark. So if anyone is in, has a business in that area, a home in that area, they're just interested, it's 5:30 from, 5:30 to 6:30 at the Holiday Building, and we had one previously, and it was very productive because there were some things that were unknown that the people in the area knew about, and I think it's going to make that project run much smoother. So if you have any questions, call me, let the city council office know, we'll make sure that you can get the information to get you there. It's important because as of next January, we should be just about ready to start Polquency construction, and all these projects have to be done before that starts. So important thing coming up, please come to the meeting, and we would love to hear your opinions. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll move on to Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Hofer, for bringing that up. People anywhere in town, actually, you know, it affects downtown, the riverfront area. The notices are going to go as far west as Clay, but for instance, people all along the First Street corridor, anybody who's interested is welcome. So thank you for that. Wanted to do a shout out regarding the Thanksgiving holiday. Yes, we are not meeting for the next week, but we've got Thanksgiving coming up for families. The Nutcracker season starts with the chocolate nutcracker this coming weekend and two subsequent nutcrackers in December. Those are some favorite parts of my holiday season. The Crady family, again, is coming back on the 23rd at T-PAC for a family events for individuals or gathering the families who are visiting from out of town. So just wanted to wish happy holidays. Oh, and Miracle on Kansas Avenue is the second, and so that's a parade downtown. Anyone is welcome to be in that parade, as I understand it, and merchants and events will be open during that evening as well. I had a request, too. A number of us on the council get, either as a group or individually, get complaints about the streets and what we're doing, and so on, and so on, and so on. If it's not already planned, I wondered if sometime by the end of the year, or soon, if we could get a composite of the street projects that we have done with photos of how good they look, and the utility projects as well. Sometimes the streets are torn up because something's happening underneath, but as we get those projects finished and zipped up, most of them are looking really good. And even though people worry about inconvenience and travel, or whether anything's happening near their house, there really are, the staff has worked really hard, and there are good things going on all over town. And sometimes we've done that before, but if we could have a composite of the projects that did happen in 2023, and then maybe a short list of what's rolling up for '24, just to let the community know what's happening, just wanted to throw that out as an idea. Thank you, and thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on to Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to wish everyone that has the time off to good times together with family and friends. Also, wanted to just give a shout out to Catherine Valdivia, one of the best-in-the-world sped teachers, and her speedy recovery. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ortiz?
She got kicked off, but I think she just got back on now.
Okay.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to say, first of all, that I really appreciate Councilwoman Ortiz. I understand she purchased a brick in her honor at Highland Park High School, so since she didn't get to hear that earlier, that announcement, I really appreciate her doing that. All true, all true. Secondly, I also, I know he's there tonight, again, I think participated with the executive session, but congratulations to David Banks, who will be taking over representation of District Four. I know he'll do a great job, and we've already been communicating on a variety of issues. So I look forward to handing that off with him. He'll do great. Congratulations, David. Lastly, I want to also congratulate my daughter, my wife, this morning headed out at 5:00 a.m. for North Dallas, and I don't know if anybody can see it, but that's little, my first granddaughter at five pounds, 11 ounces, London Lee, Colley, Wilkinson, I should know Sydney's last name now, but, so congratulations to my daughter, Sydney Anne Lavant.
Congratulations, Councilman Emerson. It's a, it's a great phase of life to move into. I can attest to that, and I know others, others in the meeting can as well. It's kind of brings you back to what life is all about. All right. That concludes our comments. I believe there is a need for an executive session. City Attorney?
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 45 minutes, to discuss matters related to one or more individual companies regarding a possible business dealing with the city, which will involve the discussion of financial affairs or trade secrets pursuant to KSA 754319B4. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff may be needed to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim city manager Neinstad and other staff he deems necessary, as well as counsel, two councilmembers-elect, Councilwoman Miller-elect and Councilman Banks-elect.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion.
All right. I'm going to go, motion by Councilwoman Nager, second by Councilwoman Valdivia Akala. City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Dobler?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
All right. We will take a 10-minute break to clear the chambers. That will bring us back here at 7:38.
There is no water, so you can't use the restroom.
Thank you. Welcome you back to the city council meeting out of our executive session. No action has been taken. However, we do need to go back into executive session. I will turn to the city attorney for a motion, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 20 minutes for consultation with the city attorney to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding one or more contracts and agreements as justified by KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are requested to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Attorney Stanley.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Emerson, second. Moved by Councilman Emerson, second by?
Councilman Kell.
Councilman Kell. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are back.
All right, I'll let you know when we're not live.
Thank you, Councilman. We are out of executive session. No votes were taken or decisions were made during that period of time. If there is no other business before the council, we are adjourned. Thank you.